Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting for the city of San Juan at 6:00 P.M. May we rise for invocation? Mr. Arhona, can you lead us, sir?
Yes, please. Our heads. Your father has been given today, we thank him for his blessings, he has bestowed upon us. When we start tonight's meeting, we ask for those that's fortunate. We ask for your guidance and wisdom as our elected officials make important decisions that will benefit our city. We pray to you in heaven and up above to watch over us, and as always, we pray in your name, amen.
Like for the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America, and to a republic for which stands the one nation.
Thank you, may be seated. Under public comments at this time? Go ahead, Mr. Arhona.
Yes, Mayor Commissioner, good evening, staff and virtual staff. Mayor, before we start, just to let you know real quick, this week is Police Week. I want to thank the Police Department Chief, your staff, for being out there. I know that this has been a crazy few months already, but they've always been out there and I want to thank them for that service. Also, on another note, I got a compliment from our neighboring city, from the city of Donna, complimenting the fact that our Fire Department assisted to one of the structural fires. And the gentleman from the city of Donna, Chief Guerrero, called to commend the staff as a well, very well job that they did. So I want to compliment and commend the Fire Department for doing that service this morning. Other than that, on the presentations, the first part of it, we have departmental reports. Tonight, we have the Department of Planning and Zoning, Parks and Recreation, the San Juan Memorial Library, and Department of Sanitation. And I believe everybody's here. Should you have any questions?
I guess my first question is to Mr. Patrick Willingham, in reference to the... Just basically, sir, an update on the municipal parks. How are we going on that?
Municipal Park is coming along very, very well. The south end park is complete, well, the inside the ballpark is complete. Turf, the sod sprinkler system. And on the north side, everywhere about halfway done with the natural grass. Everything else is complete, sprinkler system, the turf, and about halfway out to the outfield.
And that's a north side?
They should take about another, about another three days, three or four days to finish up laying the sod. At that point, both fields, inside the field, will be done. And of course, right now, we're working on the outside now. Some of the amenities that will be going on, as far as the dugouts, the shady bleachers, things like that.
Oh, the batting cages?
Batting cages.
Let me ask you this.
Some more fencing that we're looking at to keep the park secure.
And as far as the concrete work too?
Concrete work, yes, we've... Staff has done some minor work, taking out some of the old stuff, some of the old con... So we'll be replacing it and getting it up to, you know, for ADA purposes, wheelchairs can get around a lot more efficiently and safe, safety of that.
Now, as far as the south field, I know I went by there the other day, you know, it was a couple of days ago, and I did notice that the grass out in the outfield, it wasn't, I guess, up to the fence. Now, did they already fill that area, that gap?
Yes, all that is done now. There was just a little... A very, very small, by the gate, that they'll do at the last, that's just the last touch they do, right by the gate, just so that any in and out doesn't, they don't stop on it until they're ready to leave completely. It's a very, very small piece, that they leave for the last, the last thing they do before they...
Also, I know that these, we're gonna utilize parks for all our youth sports, you know, your girls and boys, softball, all ages, and some concerns that they brought up to me, they would like for us, the city of San Juan, to start up a men's softball league. Maybe we can get together, myself and Mr. Arhona, and figure out what would be a good night, where you can maybe plug in, you know, an evening for the adult playing softball, stuff like that, because...
Actually, we did, we constructed them with that in mind. The pitching anchors for the rubbers are, and the bases are from the youth, all the way to regulation baseball, and all softball, for women and adults and co-ed. So we have, all the measurements are included.
Nice.
So they were constructed with all that in mind.
That's the only question I have for you, sir. Thank you so much.
You have questions for the directors?
Give it to me.
Go ahead, sir.
Oh, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna refer back to Mr. Willingham. Yeah, before then, we used to have a lot of teams in softball, right?
Yes.
I think you used to play on Tuesdays and Thursdays, namaste, but like the mayor says, get together with them and see how we can bring them back.
Absolutely, we'll accommodate. We want to be able to grow our adult recreation as well, as the youth.
Back to Mr. Willingham. Youth sports, Pony baseball and softball season, where are we at on that?
Right now, so nationally, Pony has canceled the season as far as out-of-state tournament. We were just waiting for, so what they've done is they reverted back to each state, and they were, they haven't given us the official, as far as what they may or may not have. From what we gather, it's looking like there's not gonna be any travel even within the state. And it's gonna be kinda thrown back to each local league, as far as maybe having something, if they wish to have it, only locally. So, we're just waiting for, we've been going by their official announcements that we put it out. We have been getting requests for refunds, and we're processing them now. Just because there are some people that, whether we did decide to go forward with something later in the summer or not, they still may not be comfortable with it, and you know, we respect everybody's wishes. So if they, we'll be making a formal announcement though here within a week, as what the plans may be. But it's looking like it's gonna be left to the local level, as far as what they wish to do, depending on further information we get from the county.
So then, right now?
Right now, everything is...
Nobody practicing or anything?
Yeah, TAF, and as well as TAF, which is our summer track, and tennis, and those activities, that is handled. Our facilities, our school district facilities, and right now, school district is shut down. And we're in the same situation as pretty much every other city in the valley. Everybody uses stadiums and things like that, so that looks like that's gonna be until next summer.
So as of now?
As of right?
Our parks are shut down as well?
Yes.
It's because they're telling me that...
Oh, the parks are, they're using them for practices.
But not our team, then?
They're not local teams, they're renting them, they're renting them, yeah, for practice.
But as long as they, they're what, four or five players?
To a group, for what we understood is as long as they're in groups of four, and then spread out as much as, not that we have ten or twelve all in one bunch up there. So, we haven't had a lot of requests, we've had a few.
Okay, so a team can practice as long as...
Sure.
So, okay, and your father will win up on the...
They just contact us and schedule it. We were rotating them in two-hour increments, if needed. So, yeah, just contact the office and we can accommodate. Yes, sir.
Any other questions? If not, we'll go ahead and move on.
So, under public hearing, the first one we have is hold a public hearing for conditional use permit to allow a social event center, Fiesta Real Events Center, in 905 West 495 Suite 3, legally described as Lot 3, McBride subdivision, and requested by Ismael Rodriguez, Mr. Escobar.
Mayor Commissioners, this is a conditional use permit for an event center. This is located on I Road and 495. It's actually an existing plaza, but they're changing the owner, so they had to reapply for the conditional use permit. We do have items in your packet, the applicant, Ismael Rodriguez. He did submit the application, paid the fee as well, and we also did send the letters within 200-foot radius. So this is a public hearing, so if, I don't know if anybody here is on the public, they can make those comments.
At this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up at 6:10 P.M. Is there anyone here for or against, for or against, on this matter? If not, is there any questions for Mr. Robert, members of the commission? I see here that, yeah, it was a six and oh, six oh, you know? Okay, any questions for Mr. Escobar? If not, I'll go ahead and close this at 6:10 P.M. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next one is hold a public hearing for conditional use permit to allow a beauty salon in a residential area located at 1005 Shawnee Circle, legally described as Lot 43, Block 2, Lucero State Subdivision, is requested by Melissa Arueyes.
Under our ordinances for the city, conditional use permit, you know, they can possibly request why for, to have a beauty salon or haircut place in a residential area. There's just certain conditions that they'd have to meet if they were to open up. This is located on Sam Houston Boulevard and Shawnee Circle. It's a conditional use permit for the beauty salon in a residential zone. The applicant is Ms. Melissa Arueyes. They did submit the application, they did pay the fee. We also sent out the advertisement, and we also sent out letters within the 200-foot radius to the residents. We also have photos, as well as a zoning map, in your packet. Currently, single-family residential district. We did receive some letters, this is a public hearing, we provided them in the packet. So they're not here, but they're in the packet as well.
Yeah, those emails that were sent in, stuff like that? Okay. All right, so... Let me go ahead and open it up. At this time, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up at 6:17 P.M. Is there anyone here for or against? I know Ms. Diana Cabazos has a...
Yes, sir, I received an email from Mr. Enrique Moya and his spouse Monica Moya opposing the opening of the operation of the proposed beauty salon. The opening of such an established establishment would be in violation of the Lucero State Subdivision building agreement. Upon this business being approved, others would most likely follow suit. I also received another one from Mr. Greg and Cynthia Nava, who also live in the neighborhood. And they're opposing, since it's a residential neighborhood, they're asking for the city to follow the guidelines of the neighborhood, not only about a commercial business, but also following the two-car garage in that house that it doesn't have.
Is there anyone else for or against? No wonder. Okay, any questions for Mr. Robert Escobar, members of the commission?
Obviously, I've seen the mayor, I can...
Go ahead, sir.
I've seen this a full-blown residential area, and I'm middle of the year Shawnee. And that's kinda inside, inside the residential, correct?
It's probably like midway in.
Midway, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's the deal with the garage?
Well, that's a separate issue, but they were just saying that... Yeah, they were just saying that it didn't meet, I guess, the restrictions on the subdivision that the property owner developed on his own. So that's something that the private property owner develops, it's not any regulations from the city.
Pretty much he did it on his own.
Well, he applied for a permit, but he's supposed to talk to the subdivision to see if he can get that approved.
I know this was, this was done way before our time.
It's a separate issue.
Yeah.
This, what they're trying to do is get a conditional use permit to have that beauty salon. And one of the conditions was that they'd have, not create traffic, but you know, a lot of the letters and in that area, that's one of the main roads that people use to exit. So, you know, the public and we thought that it would probably be a traffic issue, because you need parking. And that's the main road for people to leave. It wouldn't be the best idea to have some type of business there in that residential.
You know, the concern I have as well is that if having something like that in a neighborhood, it's gonna just depreciate the other surrounding homes in that area, I'm assuming.
Well, just that, you know, people can go and get appointments and park on the street and, you know, they might...
But what I'm saying is property values, more likely, you know, and not only that, if the resident decides to sell their house, you know, and knowing that if there was something like that there, operating it, I don't think it...
The neighboring properties.
And I hear more on the side of hearing out our public and hearing out our constituents that live in that area, and it just seems that there's an overwhelming sense of, you know, asking and pleading for the city to do something about this.
Yeah, it's because that subdivision, there's two roads to it, but there's three within the subdivision. The third street's a cul-de-sac, so all those people, they can't leave, they have to go through Shawnee. So it creates more, more traffic, and that's what...
And so the planning and zoning...
They recommend denial.
Okay. Any other questions?
Give it to me, man.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Escobar, so it went through the planning and zoning, it was denied. It's coming before us. If we choose to deny it, and they continue to operate, because my understanding is they're still operating out of that home, what actions can we take?
We'd actually have to take them to court, or we can give them a violation and take them to court for doing that, and then the judge can give them a fine.
Okay, any other questions? If not, I'm gonna go ahead and close this at 6:15 P.M. 6:15 P.M. So at this time, I'm just gonna go ahead and make a motion to deny this request. That's an emotion, is there a second? Been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I just wanna make a comment before you leave the podium, Mr. Escobar. The concern that I have is that I just wanna make sure that, obviously, you saw it firsthand that the commission did deny this matter. I just don't want them to be operating, you know, 'cause it's happening. I know it's been happening before this item came to this agenda. So I just wanna make sure that maybe you can coordinate something with PD or your code enforcement to really, you know, cruise around the area, make sure that there's no, any type of business being run through there.
Okay.
Okay, sir?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
I still got two more.
Hold on.
Got three more.
Sir, I was hearing Commissioner Viegas about that two-car garage, but that's the subdivision ordinance, right?
They're the covenants of the subdivision.
It's only for them, right?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so we're okay.
They come and ask, they can, you can guide them as far as what they need to do.
Related, okay. Related back to them.
All right. Thank you, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Arhona.
The next item is hold a public hearing for a conditional use permit for a drive-through business and for the self-alcoholic beverages, for off-premise consumption, the Palomo Drive-Thru, located 901 West, 495 Suite Number 2, legally described as Lot 5, McBride subdivision, is requested by Viviana Palomo.
So this is a conditional use permit for a drive-thru, and the reason they're asking for a conditional use is because it's required through the zoning. This is located on I Road and FM 495. There was actually a previous drive-through there, so they wanna open that up. So they're applying for that conditional use permit. The applicant is Viviana Palomo, they did submit the application, we did send newspaper advertisements, we did send the letters within 200-foot radius. There's also photos in the zoning map, it's currently general business C2. So they're just part of the process, they have to apply, once we do approve this or deny it, they take a TBC to apply for their permits for alcohol. So it's just part of that process.
All right, at this time, I'm gonna open this up. I'll open this up at 6:18 P.M. Is there anyone here for or against, for or against, on this matter? Any questions for Mr. Escobar, from the members of the commission?
Is that the one that used to be morados or something before, right? It's a drive-thru?
I believe so, yeah, they actually have the door that kinda goes up. It's right next to the plaza.
You go through the back?
Yeah, you could drive around, so the cars won't be stacking, they'll actually be...
Any other questions?
Oh, good.
Okay, I'll close this up at 6:18 P.M. Is there a motion approved?
Move.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, sir.
Next item, hold a public hearing for a conditional use permit to allow multifamily dwelling along Expressway Corridor District, at proper legal describe at 15.92 acre tract of land out of the east 20 acres of Lot 3, Block 35, Alamo Land and Sugar Company subdivision, located approximately a quarter of a mile west of Cesar Chavez Road, along the south side of Sergeant Leonel Trevino, Road is requested by Leonel Cantú.
So in our zoning ordinance, in the Expressway Corridor District, the conditional use, they do allow for multifamily, so that's why they're applying for this. This is located on west of Cesar Chavez, on Sergeant Leonel Trevino. So it's a property east of Fireman's Park. It's a 15-acre tract, previously, they requested to rezone it to single-family residential. So this is a conditional use to allow for multifamily use in that zone. So this is part of the Expressway Corridor District.
And it's, it's, okay, go ahead.
By Leonel Cantú, they did submit the application, we also did send out the newspaper advertisement, as well as letters within 200-foot... So I believe this is zoning map, which will show you, it's in the Expressway Corridor District, and it's for a conditional use, so they're not changing the zone, they're asking for a conditional use permit. So it's a little different, but just what the planning and zoning was looking at, there was a San Juan Expressway Corridor study that was done, and the intent was to provide, use that property for business development. There's architectural guidelines, there's also more for mixed use, you know, apartments, you know, commercial, plazas, things like that. You know, master plan development, so it allows for apartments, but within a conditional use, but for a master development-type project. You know, this is mainly apartments, about 15%, 15% is gonna be for commercial, and the rest would be for residential, so it's very limited commercial that they're putting into that. You know, because they're doing a little bit of mixed use, they're asking for a mixed use, but...
So, so, right now, as we speak, it's zoned?
It's a corridor.
Yeah, which is commercial.
Which is commercial, but in that zone, it allows for conditional use for apartments, you know?
In this particular?
Yes.
Okay, let me go ahead and open this up. This time, I'm gonna open this up at 6:21 P.M. Is there anyone for or against, for or against? Questions from the members of the commission? The only thing... Go ahead, sir, yeah, you can, yes, sir. Just do me a favor and state your name for the record.
Yeah, I'm Bobby Bell. I own a property just east of this piece of property, and I was just wondering, all the traffic will go to the Leonel Trevino side, is that... I was just wondering how that's gonna handle 15 acres worth of apartments over there. Seems to me like it would be an awful lot of traffic for that little road.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, so basically, the intent of the Expressway Corridor was to, you know, have larger development, maybe apartments. You know, we'd like apartments, but I think the whole intent of that was to, for commercial, for retail development, so...
Yes, and the only thing, Mr. Escobar, is if we, you know, if, by, if, you know, the commission does decide to approve something like this, what we're gonna do is we're gonna set precedence here for the near future. And I know that there's areas along the corridor, you know, I think it's brought it up to our attention once, another developer, you know, wanting to build some apartments, right? And what was the outcome on that, I don't recall.
I believe it was denied, and...
It was it?
For this one, the planning and zoning, they also felt that, you know, they didn't want to just have bunch of apartments start coming in, so that's why they recommended denial for that.
And I was trying to change, not change the zoning, I think the last time, the reason was that they tried to change the zoning, right? This time, we're trying to use commercial, the front, and residential on the back. Right across the street, there is a subdivision with housing. So I don't think it's up the, and the revenue is approximately $370,000 a year for the taxes, for the city, when it's all developed. And it's a multifamily, fourplex unit, and it's gated, it's gonna be a nice development. That I, we did one in Edinburgh as well, and it worked, we'll go, on, right on Mon Mac Street, on Mon Mac Road. That was pretty much it, the value of the revenue for the city as well.
Thank you, sir.
Give it to me.
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Bob Garza. Mr. Bob, when I come to the mic, por favor. I know, welcome aboard to the EDC. Now that you're on the EDC, I know you're a former councilman. How do you feel about this area?
You're talking about Sergeant, right? As a matter of fact, I read up on it today. They did a study in reference to that. I feel we should just kinda keep it, keep it the way it is for commercial. I mean, there's a beautiful, beautiful land. I understand the gentleman that came up here and discussed about the taxes, it's great, we need taxes, you know, by all means, but I think the plan is set already. I think as a previous city commissioner, I think we even worked on that, so I honestly think we should just move forward with it. As far as keeping it the way it is.
Keeping it as it is.
That's great. Thank you, thank you, sir.
I could mention developers maybe also, commercial side, right? Coming on and, they looked at it...
And you know, the thing is that, that's all we have, that corridor, as far as for commercial development, right?
Focus.
And the focus, with the corridor study that we did a couple of years ago, the whole intent of that was that to keep that area as commercial, retail, versus any type of mixed use. And I know the corridor study does allow that through a conditional use permit. However, we feel that only because of the limited amount of land that we have on the front edge, we feel that the best for the city should be something like, just keep it as retail, commercial only.
Yeah, and that's just my, that's my concern, is that, you know, this would set precedence, and then we're gonna have other developers coming in and wanting to develop, you know, multifamily homes and stuff like that, so, all right, let me go ahead and close this up. Any other questions for Mr. Escobar?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing that I have in mind and envision is that a keeper commercial. We've had it like that, we can attract a big box retail. And if you go back to the Expressway, with the exception with the old settlements, if you follow that line of commercial all the way from here to Mission, you know, basically all commercial. If you build this imaginary line, and that's what I envision, something that is gonna connect. It's like, I always say, I used to live in Austin, like Old 35 used to be very rural, and now everything's connected commercially-wise, and that's kinda what I'm envisioning, so that's my opinion on that.
Any other questions or comments? Not, I'm gonna close this at 6:27 P.M. This time, I'll go ahead and make a motion to deny, is there a second? Been second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, sir.
The next item, hold a public hearing for a conditional use permit to allow a food concession stand, pick-up, snacks with the drive-through window at 411 North Raoul Longoria Road, legally described as a west 309.24 feet of the south, 140.86 feet of the north, 281.72 feet of the lot 10, Block 8, tracks 19 to 20, junk loss from subdivision, and requested by Stephanie Villarreal.
This is a conditional use permit, and it's to allow food concession stand. It's kinda like a snow cone, some snacks that they're gonna be doing in a trailer. Located on Raoul Longoria between Nolan and Minnesota, there's actually an existing car dealership there, that there's plenty of room for them to put a trailer like that. It's submitted by Stephanie Villarreal, they did submit the application, as well as, we also sent out the newspaper advertisement, as well as sent letters within 200-foot radius. So it's currently zoned general business C2. Just some of the conditions that we'd ask for the trailers, that it be anchored properly, they'd skirt the bottom so that, you know, it looks a lot cleaner. Restrooms available, they'd also have to comply with the health permits and the occupational permit as well. And then every year, they'd have to renew the conditional use permit. So as long as they meet those conditions, the city, the staff, there's no problem with that. And also the planning and zoning, they did approve.
This time, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up at 6:28 P.M. Is there anyone here for or against, for or against? Any questions for Mr. Escobar, in reference to this matter? There was unanimous, and you mentioned it's yearly, they gotta...
Yeah, they have to.
Okay, okay. Any other questions for Mr. Escobar? Not, I'll close this at 6:29 P.M. Is there a motion approved?
Move.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, sir.
The next item under ordinance is, we have considered adoption of an ordinance in the first reading to amend the city's San Juan code of ordinances. Chapter 13 Utilities, Article 13.03 Water and Sewer Service Division, Two Rates Charges in Building Part 4 Sewer Rates and Charges, adding Section 13.03.185, Sewer Maintenance Line Televising Fee, establishing Sewer Maintenance Line Televising Services, establishing the rate to be charged by the city of San Juan, providing for a repealer clause, providing for codification and providing for publication and an effective date. Mr. Saldanis?
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. A few years ago, the city commission adopted a ordinance that allowed the city to charge... that allowed the city to charge a small fee to clean out service lines for the customers as a way to help the customer uh, be able to maintain their, their lines. One of the things that's come about from that, that, uh, that ordinance is that when we do go out there to, to service the lines and we do encounter like mud and roots, they ask us to televise it. And the camera that we have, it is a very good tool. We've done it for, for several people, but we don't have a mechanism for charging and we tend to, uh, have to do more maintenance on our cameras, so this fee will allow us to cover that maintenance. The other thing we've also been using it for is to locate the stubouts for some of the older existing subdivisions that don't have them marked. So this allowed for us to cover some of the fees that we're, we're expending when we send a crew out to the field for one to two hours to, to televise and locate those, those stubouts for some of these, these lots. So I'm asking for your authorization to amend the existing ordinance, uh, get it qualified to, to be able to charge a fee, which is the first-time service fee of two hundred fifty dollars, and that'll include fifty feet of line, which is about the average size of a service line for a house from the house to our main. And then anything after that would be at a five dollar per foot. There is a typo in the ordinance. I just saw it right now. Of course, this is a first reading. It still needs to come back to you all for second reading, uh, for final approval, uh, and basically that, that's the reason why to amend the ordinance.
Any question, Sir Salinas?
How many costs do we get a day, about this? More or less? I mean, I mean, not a day, I'm saying in a month.
Day? Well, this, this one, right now, we've been getting a lot because there's been a lot of people at home and the problems that we have is the flushable wipes, uh, and, and the grease that people are using. They're preparing more meals at home now. So the grease and the flushable wipes, they end up being clogging the line. And some of the older sections of town like that here, we still have a lot of clay line. So a lot of that clay line and we have a lot of old growth trees. They have a lot of, uh, roots. So, uh, we tend to get a lot right now. Uh, they have gone down from the orig- from the first, uh, thirty days that we were in this quarantine, uh, we're down to, we got two today and we were getting an average of about eight a day. So now we're down to two today, so which is good. Uh, we've been working the jet machine out really, in fact, before I left, they called in another one about four thirty, so the, the guys are probably still out there right now working on that.
We're, we're charging two hundred fifty dollars for fifty feet, correct?
Yes.
So you propose this five dollars, five, five dollars additional fee per feet?
Yes, per feet. And that's where the typo is at. It says two hundred and fifty and it's after the five fifty foot, yeah.
After two fifty.
After fifty feet, after fifty feet, any feet after that is five dollars, which is, which is about the average cost for camera service. In fact, uh, the quote that we got to televise Citrus, if y'all remember citruses, that was about five dollars per foot. So, so that's, that's.
That was my question. How, how do you get, how did you come up with the number?
Yeah, we.
Two hundred and fifty?
The two hundred and fifty is, is, uh, is about the average service charge. Yes, the standard service charge that they charge if you want to televise your, your sewer line. That's the, that's the average charge. Plus, we also included the wear and tear of the machine for the maintenance, uh, the crews that go out there along with the equipment, uh, that goes out there, the trucks. So all those costs were, were taken into consideration.
Alright, any questions for Mr. Salinas? Is there a motion approved? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
The first item on the appointment, we have considered the removal and reappointment of board member, members to the San Juan Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Mr. William.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Com- Uh, last month, late last month, we had, uh, a resignation by Mr. Moivas Aldúa, uh, resigning his position on the, uh, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. He's, he's on another board, so he didn't want to overextend himself too much. Uh, since then as well, I received a second email, uh, resignation from another Parks, uh, and Rec, uh, advisory board member, uh, board member, excuse me, uh, Mr. Ralph Quintanilla as well. Uh, work conflict and couldn't, didn't have the time anymore. Um, before you, I believe you have the two applications.
Yeah.
That, uh, have been submitted.
So I'll go ahead and, uh, I noticed that, that in our, in our file, or we only have two. So with that being said, I'll just go ahead and make a motion to appoint R.C. Flores and, uh, Aaron Gonzalez. Been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
The next item is consider the removal and reappointment of board members of the San Juan Economic Development Corporation. Remember, we have one resignation from the EDC board as, uh, Mr. Bob, but he's no longer a member, so we're going to have one resignation.
Go ahead, man.
Okay. Um, the Economic Development Corporation has a board of directors in which consists of seven directors who are appointed for two-year terms of office. Um, three of the directors shall be persons who are not employees of the governing body of the eligible city as per section four B.C. of the Act of nineteen seventy-nine. Um, so at this point, I, I provided you with a list of the current members. Um, I didn't put any applications along with this because we did not receive any. Um, I also went through the applications that we have on file and they are all expired. Um, we have not received any new applications for the EDC board.
So I guess, uh, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, Mr. Robert Laredo in, uh, in that open space.
Second? Been second by Coach Neto Juarez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
The next item, item on the discussion and possible action, we have considered the approval of budget amendment in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and eight dollars out of Missalinas' grant fund balance to the Police Department of Missalinas' grant budget.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. This is a, um, an amendment that we're doing because of the grant that we received for thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and eight on the COVID-nineteen. So, uh, we also attached a resolution and this is, uh, items that we're going to be purchasing for, uh, law, for first responders to include the fire department as well.
So this is for PD and fire?
This is, yeah, yes, sir. PD and fire, yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, because here it just states, uh, okay, I got you.
Yeah, we were the, uh, through the Hudson Village, we were the, uh, grantees, the ones that we submitted the grant, yes.
Any questions for Chief Gonzalez? If not, is there a motion approved? Is there a second? All, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
The next item, consider the approval of budget adjustment in the amount of thirty-four thousand, two hundred and forty out of the federal forfeiture fund balance to the Police Department Federal Forfeiture Budget.
Yes, uh, Mayor Commission, this is also a, uh, budget for allocating some, um, funds so we can cover overtime from asset forfeiture to the, to our regular, uh, patrol services, uh, uniform services. So, uh, this is strictly for patrol uniform services.
Um, chief?
Yes.
Is that money that was, were you going to allocate for overtime money? So is that, do we use, are we going to, uh, cover some, uh, overtime or is to get overtime?
No, to get overtime. We, uh, we were budgeted ninety thousand dollars this past year, uh, and, uh, for our budget and we depleted that. So this is to cover the rest of the, uh, months until, until the end of the year, this fiscal year. And, and just to give you a little bit of numbers, uh, the ninety thousand, uh, were covered through patrol, eleven hundred and forty-eight hours for patrol, uh, three hundred and seventy-three for CID and a hundred and ninety-six for dispatch, jaders, evidence takes and others. So the majority of overtime is all uniform services for patrol.
Are we, or do we have funding from, uh, Border Star or Stone Garden?
Yes, yes, uh, and those are two separate, Border Star and Stone Garden, those two separate, uh, 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 grants plus a traffic grant that, uh, you know, officers are working detail on that.
Those are additional money, so.
Yes, additional money.
It's operational for a city, uh, that's not covered through the Border Star.
That is correct, Mayor. So basically it's for staffing on patrol.
Right.
For call for service, for, uh, officer staying over writing reports, uh, officers covering shift for persons on sick leave, annual leave, come time, workman come and so forth, so.
Any other questions? If not, motion approved. Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next item, uh, discussion and possible action regarding Igual County Elections Department request for early voting election day. Holy locations of fire station number two, twenty-three oh one Raúl Longoria, San Juan, Texas, seventy-five oh nine for the twenty-twenty primary runoff.
In the past, the County of Igual Elections Department has reached the City of San Juan requesting the San Juan Fire Station number two for elections. This year, they're requesting the facility for the early voting and election day of the twenty-twenty primary runoffs. Um, in your packet, you have the dates that they are requesting. Um, they have early voting from July sixth through July tenth with election day of July fourteenth. But they reached out to me this morning because, um, there were some changes yesterday, um, with one of the orders from the governor. So now they want the early voting from June twenty-nine through July tenth.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. June twenty-nine?
Yes.
Through?
July.
Twenty-nine through July tenth?
Yes.
And times are still the same?
Seven AM to seven PM every day.
Seven AM to seven PM, July, yeah, okay.
And the election day is going to remain the same, um, July fourteenth as the date for that one.
That's election day?
Yes.
And this is for the primary, okay. Now, you know, I, I, I don't know if you can maybe answer this, Diana, but you know how there's been talk as far as in state, uh, and maybe even the federal government as far as having, uh, I've been hearing that there's a possibility or they may look into mailing ballots, you know, for everyone. And then I've heard, no, only mailing ballots for sixty-five years and older. So with us proving this, obviously it's for the, the voter to go in and actual cast the vote at this particular location.
Correct, but, um, like they told me from the Igual County, I mean, things are changing every day. So for now, this is what they provided, but it could.
Not, it's not concrete, pretty much what you're saying.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, no, no, that's fine. We'll just have to come back in and, and, okay, I got you. Any questions for Ms. Diana? If not, is there a motion approved? Is there a second? Go ahead, sir.
Quick, I don't know if the motion has to include a new date, uh, legal?
The new dates.
The new dates.
The motion has to include the, uh, the new dates.
Or as recommended by the city secretary. I, I would, I would do that, as, as recommended by city, city staff.
Which is?
Uh, June the twenty-ninth through July tenth.
Good.
And also regular day, July, July.
Correct. That's your motion? Is there a second? Second by Mr. Viegas. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item on the contraction, we have considered authorizing city manager to extend the contract for the City of San Juan Project Manager with Strata Engineering and Consulting LLC for the transit terminal building, City Hall pursuant to our F-U, eighteen dash sixty-four dash O-three dash twenty. This is just a renewal contract, Mayor Commissioners, as the other one. This is just one year and then we're extending it another year.
So I know, I know in reference to the project manager right now, the ball's going in reference in the city hall. You know, everything's pretty much green light.
Right. As a matter of fact, at the next meeting, we should be bringing the, uh, architecture.
Yeah.
Already, uh, and making a determination as to who you, you all going to be.
So when's the closing day for them to submit their bids? Is it today? If I'm not mistaken, I, I think it might be the day of tomorrow. No?
It's anytime soon now.
That's fine, that's fine.
Because it will be Wednesday, uh, maybe next week or this week. I'll, I'll check, but is, is it this week or next week?
So let me ask you this. So for our next meeting, we'll have the, the, yeah, the, come in and just present and then the commission decides. Correct, alright. Any questions for Mr. Arona? If not, is there a motion approved? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item, consider authorizing City of San Juan under resolutions to, to apply and submit a grant application for funding to the Office of the Governor for the City of San Juan COVID-nineteen Response Program fiscal year twenty-twenty, chief.
Yeah, this is, uh, reference to item B I just mentioned, same, same grant, yes, sir.
Yeah, with that being said, is there a motion approved? Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Consent agenda, we have, uh, item A and B. Should you like to discuss further, we can pull any, any items out of that.
At this time, is there anything we need to modify or amend under consent agenda? If not, is there a motion approved? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Under executive session, we have the San Juan City Commission convene executive session according with the Texas Open Meetings Act, burdens Texas statutes and co-sanitary government code chapter five five one. So now we have, uh, item one, two, and three.
At this time, uh, city commission will go into executive session. Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We will be going in executive session at six forty-five PM. Back, uh, from executive session at seven twenty-one PM, is there a motion to reconvene? Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under executive session, under executive session one, at this time, we're going to take no action, no action. Under executive session two, I'll go ahead and make a motion to negotiate, enter agreement with promoter, discuss in executive session. That's in a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Under executive session three, um, I'll go ahead and make a motion to negotiate and enter an agreement with parameters with provisions, discuss in executive session. That is in a motion. Is there a second? There's been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Is there a second? This meeting has been adjourned at seven twenty-two PM. Thank you.